Mary Beth Lynch, and please permit me to confirm that all members and persons participating on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Cosette.
Yes.
Peter Mulcahy.
Here.
And Matthew Armenti.
It does not appear that Matthew is here yet.
Okay. Bernie, we do have to wait for Matthew.
Yeah, he was here a second ago.
Yeah, because I saw him on earlier.
So more people have just joined. Let's see.
Do we have Matthew?
Working on it. Think that might be it. Nope, just left.
Uh, I think he just joined.
There he is.
Uh, Matt Armenti, if you're here, could you please respond in the affirmative?
I am here.
Great, thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bernie Cahill.
Here.
Kristina Repolo.
Here.
And Aides Rudis.
Aides, but yes.
Aides, apologize. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the zoning board of appeals and is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public hearings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting features public comments. For this meeting, the zoning board of appeals is convened by Google Hangouts, as posted on the town's website identifying how to publicly join. Um, Bernie, do I, at this point, discuss the number to dial in, or are we okay on that?
If you could mention it, yes, please.
Okay, to participate in the public comment portion of this public hearing, please dial 1-347-363-3552 and enter the following PIN, And please, may I remind you?
Mary Beth, I have a different number. Kristin, can you, Repolo, can you confirm which number it is? Kristin Repolo, are you there?
Yep, so the number is 1-321-586-0731, and the PIN is 140-482-071.
Thank you, Kristin, for that. May I also remind you to please mute your device until the chair of the board addresses this agenda item or opens the meeting in public comments. The chair and the clerk are not present for tonight's ZVA meeting, and in lieu of such matter, the reference is made to Article 2, Section 6 of the zoning board of appeals rules and regulations that state "A minimum of four board members, regular or associate, shall be present at all public hearings in order to conduct the quorum. In addition to this, a vote will need to be taken to assign a temporary chair for tonight's meeting." Can I please get a motion to appoint a temporary chair for tonight's meeting?
Ms. Lynch, I nominate you to be chair for this meeting this evening.
Thank you. Do a second, please?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter? Matthew?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. Moving right into our agenda, we do have a nice, long agenda for everyone listening. Um, we are going to get, take care of some housekeeping items right out of the gate. Um, I need a motion to approve a bill of $168 to the Worcester Telegram and Gazette for legal notices advertised on May 26, 2020. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve said bill.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter Mulcahy?
Aye.
Matt Armenti?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Let's move right into our first agenda item. First on our list is to hear the appeal of Linda E. Turnquist, 389 Prospect Street, Shrewsbury, Mass., for two variances and one special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 7, Table 2, and Section 4B, to construct an addition and carport to an existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at 47 Plainfield Avenue in the resident B2 district. The subject premises is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 39, Plot 036000. Ms. Turnquist, are you in attendance?
I am.
Welcome, and I believe Richard Ricker is here as well.
Hi. Hello there. Yes, I, yes, I am here, but I, I only assisted early on. I think Linda was in front of your board last month, and I think there were a couple of issues that I spoke with the building department and with the town planner about, but I think what she's asking for is pretty straightforward. So, um, so I frankly wasn't expecting to do a presentation for this. I thought, this is a very personal matter to Ms. Turnquist, and I think she has her personal reasons. This is a long-time-standing home. This is the home that you grew up in in Shrewsbury, and she simply wants to add, in addition to the first floor of the house and carport, she did give a lot of thought to a garage, which, as you know, sometimes is considered not necessarily more nonconforming than anything else. We recall town council's memo relative to that. The big, real issue here, I think, is the addition on the back, which is still quite a distance away from her neighbor. She has spoken to all of her neighbors, and I think they're all set with this, if Linda can verify that, but I think that that is the case. It's simply a matter that she's getting older, she needs to go to single level. The house that she's in is too large for her in Shrewsbury. She wants to move back to her family home. Am I correct, Linda?
You are correct. Actually, the house is sold on 389 Prospect Street, so I'm homeless now.
If I could add further information for the board, this was originally going to be a carport with an addition, but as of June 29th, 2020, after talking with the architect and other such members of the planning department, we have decided that we are going to withdraw the carport from the board meeting and just move forward with the addition, which is 18 feet by 24 feet, which is less than 50% of the square footage of the existing building.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Aides.
Yes, Lisa.
So it was originally, I believe, two variances and a special permit. What is before us now with the removal of the carport? Could you confirm?
It is a special permit for the addition.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, may I ask, do we have an updated plot plan on this?
We have a plot plan. It is the original plot plan. It has a carport on there, but the architect told me today if I would either X it off or just not even view it and such, that it's just the addition, but if you would like, I can share what the plot plan looks like.
That would be great.
And Madam Chair, if I could, on behalf of Linda, I would suggest that if you do vote in the affirmative, that you could make it subject to her filing a revised plot plan that eliminates that carport. I would suggest to you respectfully that there is nothing here that would be detrimental to the neighborhood or to the general public, and therefore, a special permit is warranted by this application. Thank you, thank you for letting me jump in there.
Sure thing, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Everybody?
Oh, this here is the plot plan. Can we see this on my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so here we have the proposed addition down below here. Originally, when this was sketched up with the architect, included a portion of the house that is already pre-existing. After talking with the applicant, Ms. Linda Turnquist and the architect, I have found that it is actually 18 by 24. The 24 feet wide is what it is, the, I mean, 23 feet wide and 18 feet long is the brand-new addition, and the house is 32 feet long by 23 feet wide. So this, therefore, is less than 50% square footage added to the new addition.
Okay. Is there anyone, anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Okay, thank you. There'll be no further questions. We'll take this under advisement, and you'll be informed of our decision.
Mary Beth, excuse me. Before you move to close the public hearing and vote, to Richard's point, I'd sent you some language for a potential condition of the decision, which I think can simply state that upon filing of the building permit that a revised plot plan be submitted. So when you do take the vote, I would take the vote with that condition.
Okay, great. Just to confirm, we are voting after each hearing, is that correct? Is that what we've been doing in the past?
Correct.
All right. Let's move into a vote if we could. Lisa?
So, uh, I, first, I have no discussion on the matter. When Ms. Turnquist came before us last time, she answered all of our questions, and now that the carport is out of the picture, I have no remaining issues. So as a point of discussion, I don't know if any other members want to discuss. If not, I would like to make a motion to approve the special permit with the stipulation that Bernie just set forth.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Matt?
Aye.
So moved with the condition to require an updated plot plan that does not include the carport to be submitted to the building along with the building permit application. Okay. Great. Okay, our second hearing for this evening is to hear the appeal of Anthony Montanari, 7779 Harrington Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., for two variances to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under Section 7, Table 2, to construct a shed within 11.2 feet and 5.5 feet from the side property lines on a corner lot upon property located at 7779 Harrington Avenue in the resident B2 district. The subject premise is described on the Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 20200. Mr. Montanari, are you in attendance? Okay.
Uh, they may be muted, I'm not sure.
Sorry.
Bernie, was this yours?
Uh, no, it was not. However, Mr. Montanari, if you are listening, and I believe it's star six to unmute yourself if you've called in. Mr. Montanari, are you there? I'd suggest to the chair that we reorder the agenda and skip this one and can go back to it if Mr. Montanari appears.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Next item on the list, to hear the appeal of Harold Russell, 70 Spring Street, Shrewsbury, Mass., for a variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 7C to construct a shed 3.4 feet from the rear property line upon property located at 70 Spring Street in the resident B1 district. The subject premise is described on the Assessor Tax Plate 17, Plot 101000. Mr. Russell, are you in attendance this evening?
Yes, I am.
Welcome, good evening.
Thank you, good evening to you.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about what you've, your planning on doing?
Sure, as you noted, I live at 70 Spring Street. If you take, if you're standing on 70 Spring Street looking at my house, the southwest corner is the most flat piece of the property. If you're standing on that corner and looking down at the southeast back property line, it's about a 30, 40-foot drop. So the whole property slopes, you know, west to east, and in front of my back, my neighbor's house, there's a water retention. So that's why the deep slope and everything flows that way. There was really no good option for me to put a shed on a property except in the southwest corner.
So hardship being topography?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any, anyone in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Hi, yes. Hi, yes, it's Jason Goodell. I, I live on 2 Spring Meadow Drive in Shrewsbury.
Yes, Jason.
And, and my property is the property on the southwest side. So I think, yeah, this, the proposed shed is obviously very close to our boundary. The current, uh, the current fence line that we have is slightly on outside of the, of the property at this point. And the, um, and there's a platform that's being constructed where the shed was proposed to be built, and there's a very small amount of room within a foot of the, of the property. So it feels extremely close to the boundary. I, I do understand the slope down. Obviously, we share that property line, so I know how it goes down to the, to the southeast. But there's still quite a significant amount of land at that particular point that I'm not sure why it needs to be right up on the boundary line.
Thank you. Bernie, um, is this your hearing?
No, this is mine.
Hi.
What I can state for you, Mary Beth, is the fact that what is pre-existing there is a bunch of peestones that are 3.4 feet away from the southernmost border of the property. So being that there is existing peestones in that location, that is the reason why the applicant, Hal Russell, has stated to build the shed there.
Aides, it looks like a fire pit. Is that the peestone that you're referring to?
Yeah, so there's existing peestone in that location. I don't know if it looks like a fire pit, but on the plot plan that I have showing, plan showing proposed shed prepared for Harold's, it is a proposed shed on existing peestone that is 16 by 12 feet.
But it's, it's not a fire pit. There is a fire pit on the property, but not at that location.
Sorry, I'm just on Google Maps trying to figure out where this platform is.
There's a lot of trees, you may not be able to see it.
Madam Chair, if I could ask Mr. Russell to give some, to cite some sort of response to the abutter who just made a comment?
Sure, as I mentioned, the southwest corner is the flattest piece of the property. I suspect when they subdivided the properties to put my neighbor's house in, that area was all flat. As you mentioned, the, as you go to the southeast corner, I think my property drops about 40 feet going down. So this was, um, this was the most ideal location for it. Now, as far as being on the property line, I get it, it's three and a half feet or 3.4 feet, whatever it is. But my neighbor did install, I, I don't know what it, it's what would cause it, some sort of barrier blocking the view, so there's no view from my property or their property.
Madam Chair, through you. Could the current abutter now ask any further questions, if you'd like, from Mr. Russell, based on his response?
Yeah.
Through the chair.
So, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, sorry, I didn't know if I was on mute or not. So the important part is, it's very close to the fence that, that leveling platform was recently placed in, at that location, and I, and it doesn't need to be so close to the boundary. And that's the concern is that is extremely close. The, the platform is within one foot of the boundary. A dog is about all that can sit behind that current peestone platform and the actual fence line. And so that's the concern I have, it is extremely close. Obviously, the shed might be a few extra feet off that property line, but it's extremely close.
Madam Chair, I have a follow-up.
Certainly.
Aides, if you could confirm, it's, is the setback, the required setback, 10 feet?
The required setback for any shed of 200 square feet or smaller, according to Section 7C of the zoning bylaw, is that it has to be 10 feet from the property line, whether it is side yard, rear yard, it is 10 feet.
Okay, so I have a follow-up. Uh, if it, if this didn't come before us in the first place and the appellant attempted to place that gravel area within the 10 feet, I'm sure there would have been some grading, a lot of grading that had to be done. So I can understand why you'd want to go to the flattest part of your property, but would you consider something that is, let's say, between the three and a half and the 10 feet? And then I'd like to hear the abutter's opinion.
I guess that was a question for me.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, so this area was prepared as part of a home addition we put on the, in the house last year, so it's, it's somewhat fixed at this point. And I understand my neighbors in the back, I get it. They used to be my neighbors on the one side, yet when they lived there, they had a shed right on top of the property line, no issues and no concerns, so they moved to the back. And I, I do, I understand their concern, we're not trying to, you know, be bad neighbors. As I said, this was, the construction of this area was part of a larger home addition, and it's just, it happens to be the flattest part of the land. If I push towards the house, even five, six, seven feet, then you start hitting that slope, and you run into other problems.
Any other comments from any of the other members?
Yeah.
Um, I have one question, Madam Chair. I guess two follow-ups. First, when we're talking about a platform, do we mean like a constructed platform, or are we just talking about the graded pea gravel? Is the first question. And the second question, there was reference to a fence that was put up. Is that fence taller or shorter than the proposed shed?
So the area, I initially just had the area flattened, and then when the shed folks came to install it, they said that was unacceptable. So there is a two, two and a half foot wall. It, it sort of blends right into the grade going to the southwest corner. So at one end, there's, the southwest corner, it's grade level, and at the end of it, on the southeast side, it's about two and a half feet. Now, the, we do have a black four-foot fence that separates the property, but on top of that, my neighbor installed, I, I don't know if it's trellis, but they're about eight, 10 feet tall, so I, I, they can't see me, I can't see them. So whether it's right on top of the property line or recessed, I, I think it's sort of, I don't know. I, I just don't think, they, they can't see it, they can't see me, and I can't see them. It looks like an eight-foot pallet, 10-foot pallet that goes up way above the four-foot black fence.
And then a question for Aides.
It is an eight-foot trellis, yep. Yarden trellis.
Thank you.
And then a follow-up question for Aides. The constructed platform, is that subject to the setback? In other words, are we really talking about something that's, the purposes of the zoning rules, one foot from the property line or three feet from the property line?
So according to the plot plan that is provided to us from the Jarvis Land Survey, it is 3.4 feet away from the property line. So that is where the peestone currently exists. Now, of course, hearing the applicant, it is, it does have to be 10 feet away for a shed, so he is asking for the variance of that 7.6 feet.
All right, I think what I'm asking is, is that three feet, you're saying that three feet is the measurement to the platform, not to the shed?
Um, it is unclear on my screen, but I would assume it is to a structure, because any structure requires that to be accounted for.
So I guess that turns into a question through the chair to the property owner.
Yeah, Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Can you, um, just explain the 3.4-foot measurement off the back? Can you give us an idea? Is that to the property line?
I, I'm not 100% sure. I think it's, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, and I certainly don't want to mislead anybody.
Yeah, I, sorry, this is Jason Goodell again. It, I haven't measured it, of course, but it is within 3, 3.4 feet. Definitely within that distance, so is it 12, is it a foot, 18 inches, or something like that? That's the, this raised area, whatever that is called, where the peestone is now. It is closer to the fence line.
Anyone else here to be heard on this? Okay, there'll be no further questions. We will take this under advisement, and you will be informed of our decision, and thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Oh, we're supposed to be discussing these, correct?
Yes, we're moving to vote right after each one.
Lisa?
I have a dog bothering me. So I were to deliberate now, I believe, before we make a motion. So, um, I, I am leaning towards approval. I have seen this property and looked at GIS also, but that's- not really what I'm basing my decision on. I don't believe this will add any type of nuisance noise, traffic, anything like that. And I think there's the position of it with the abutters property, the way their house and structures are positioned. I don't think it's going to be that much of an issue. And I do see that topography is definitely a hardship. And even if the shed were moved further away from the property, it would not be able to be, excuse me, it wouldn't be feasible to move it within the ten foot setback. So I would be approving any type of variance and I'm fine with the, what the appellant is asking for. So I would vote to approve, but I won't make a motion till we discuss more.
Peter?
I think I agree with all that. I think it would be nice to know whether the structure was actually one feet or three feet in terms of the platform. But I think honestly, either way, based on the height of the fence and based on the steep, steep slope, I think I'd be inclined to approve it. Whether it's three feet or one feet away.
Matt Armenti?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I would say I, I think we do have a topography issue. And I too looked at, I think it would be tough to find another place for a shed on this property. So, and I, based on my observation, I think the three point four foot seems like the right measurement to me. So can I get a?
Yes. So on that note, I make a motion to approve the appeal of seventy Spring Street.
Seconded.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter Mulcahy?
Aye.
Matt Armenti?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Okay. Next on the agenda, to hear the appeal of MAG Real Estate Holdings Shrewsbury LLC, seven seventy Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. For two variances to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section seven B, table two, to allow display inventory and storage of vehicles in the fifty foot front yard and side yard upon property located at eight hundred Boston Turnpike in the limited industrial district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty five, plot zero two six zero zero zero. Do we have?
You have, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I'm not sure whether you want to hear this appeal at the same time as the one for seven eighty, seven eighty eight and eight hundred together. They are by the applicant being sought to be, both parcels are, are being sought to be used as BMW dealership. So I might suggest that you read both into the record if you feel that that's appropriate. Otherwise separately.
We could do them separately for now because I don't have it right in front of me and I apologize.
Okay, all right. If I could, though, Madam Chair, members of the board, with all due respect, my name is Richard Rick. Here, I'm an attorney. Offices at eleven Maple Avenue in Shrewsbury, and I'm here representing MAG Real Estate Holdings, Shrewsbury Holdings LLC. Also participating tonight is Matt McGovern. I believe he's on phone. And, and he's McGovern Auto Group and the BMW dealership franchisee. Also with us is David Mackwell from Kelly Engineering, who's the engineer of record for this project. And should it go forward, then we would be proceeding from here to the planning board and then to the conservation commission. You may recall last month that we were in front of you, or a month or two ago, we were in front of you for this site. And at that time, we chose based on comments from the town planner, Mr. Cahill, and based on some questions of interpretation of certain parts of the bylaw, including definition of parking, we chose to set this issue aside and revisit, revisited in the appeal before you this evening. This is frankly, the most conservative way for us to approach this request. Asking for variances for the parking, storage and inventory and display parking along the edges of the property. You will note, I'm sure, and Bernie, if you could put up the plan, are you able to or does the board have the plan in front of them? Basically, you'll note from the plan in front of you that this is, this, this corner of Route nine and Chestnut Street consists of basically two lots. Seventy eight, seven eighty eight Boston Turnpike has thus far been used lawfully for the storage of inventory and the storage of automobiles. That was allowed by permit of the selectmen as it's, as it was in a limited industrial zone several years ago. If they use this such a sense, this request, it basically asks for that configuration to essentially remain the same with the exception of an entry into eight hundred Hartford bike from this lot so that vehicles can be shuffled in and of, of the lot. The appellant wishes, as I suggested, to utilize both lots essentially as one for the BMW dealership when it moves from its present site to the building at eight hundred Hartford, eight hundred Boston Turnpike. The plan is to basically and essentially use the site as one. As noted in the, in the town planner's letter, I would respectfully suggest to you that clearly there is a large wetland area in the interior portion of this parcel towards the rear of the property. But as you can see, it takes up a substantial portion of the lot that exists. The, the remainder of the, the lot being substantially impacted by the, the eighty thousand square foot plus building, which is at present is underutilized and needs extensive renovation in order to be used for the new BMW dealership. I would suggest to you respectfully that this wetland area presents us with a hardship. It is topographical. It clearly would require that, that we have all the vehicles pushed away from it towards roadway and towards, as you know, because this is a corner. The frontage of Chestnut Street and Route nine are both front setbacks. In two thousand and twelve, there was a permit by the previous owner of the property, allowed by the planning board. And I believe you had that in your packages at the last meeting, an approval for the expansion of parking substantially along the same lines as what we're asking for today, except that the Chestnut Street parking that we're asking for towards the south, along Chestnut Street, that is actually inventory stack parking area. And the parking was developed by the previous owner with the exception of the far end of that lot. As you're looking at the plan, it's the end of the lot to the right towards the UMass property. The plan is to maintain the present buffer of, of the stone wall and the vegetated buffer along Chestnut Street. That will be maintained and enhanced by the BMW dealership in order to complement what I would suggest to you is going to be a very attractive dealership. You saw the elevations at the last meeting that we had. And, and I would suggest to you that the hardship that we're talking about is clearly incidental only to this lot. This is a really isolated wetland area, which is surrounded basically by the outlines of the rear portion of this lot. The southern portion of the lot is, is basically taken up by this wetland. So it is incidental to this parcel. I would suggest to you also that there's no derogation to the bylaw in this request, as much as the property is going to be used for a BMW dealership, if you so allow this. It is in keeping with the area. There are the dealerships that, it's, it's Route nine. It's a, a perfect spot for this. And I would suggest respectfully, there's no detriment whatsoever to the neighborhood from this request. Route nine is a busy thoroughfare, as we all know. Chestnut Street leads from Route nine to basically South Street, along which there are substantial parking areas and UMass and other offices down further towards South Street. So there is no detriment whatsoever by virtue of noise, traffic or otherwise to be concerned with, I think, with respect to this particular request. The display pads that we were asking for along Route nine, I know that the building department had some comments about that. And, and this proposal really is intended to address those. Your applicant here is not desiring or asking you to allow him to line cars along Route nine, the way other dealerships in town have done so. These are very defined pad, well laid out, I would suggest. He's going to have backstops on the pads to, to keep the vehicles from kind of creeping, as Bernie would say, kind of creeping in further into the green space. So they're very well defined. They are limited in number and scope. And frankly, they are, I think, tastefully adequate plan. You know, this is the car dealership and he needs to have some exposure and he needs to put his best foot forward. And this is an effort to do that in a neat and orderly fashion. And I would suggest to you, there's nothing offensive or nothing of any nuisance value to this at all. And I, I would suggest that in keeping with the building inspector's consistent feelings about cars encroaching on the roadway, basically. This is substantially away from the roadway. I think, I think in my narrative, I told you the distance. But it is still substantially off of Route nine, forty two to forty three feet from the paved way of Route nine. That's substantially different than other dealerships you will see around Shrewsbury, even further down Route nine. You know, these vehicles that we're talking about, and these very limited pads are forty two to forty three feet off of the paved way. In terms of the dealership itself, I, I suggest to you again respectfully, this is really good for the town. I think it's a, it's a, it's a very good project for this particularly underutilized building. The building grounds, real estate tax will increase. We're going to see, I would suggest to you, excise taxes increase this town and, and this is a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. The increase in the size of the dealership will result in thirty plus more jobs, all in the, in the category of a hundred thousand dollars plus per year. And the use of the present site of BMW, once the new franchise is secured for that site, will generate its own income in terms of excise taxes for loaners and, and additional real estate tax, which it's already paid. So I would suggest to you all in all that this is a proposal, good, good proposal for the town. You clearly do have a hardship. And it is incidental to this lot. And with that, if you have any questions, either myself or, or Dave Mackwell or Matt can answer them.
Richard, I would like to put up the plan for viewers at home, if you would. I didn't want to interrupt your very fine presentation. No, it's okay. It's, it's shown now. Can everyone see that?
I can see it.
Okay. So the pads that Richard's talking about, if you can see the cursor on the left hand side here along Route nine, are these hash marked ovals. The red lines indicate where there would be display and inventory of cars within the fifty foot setback. So that's what you're looking at with those straight red lines. Those are the fifty foot setback. That's not going to be for customer parking. That's going to be as cars come in and out of sale, for sale, being cleaned, what have you. That's where they'd be stored. And the bottom left hand corner, you can see seven eighty eight is the bottom left kind of it's a little bit bigger than a sliver of land, but you can see the portion of land there along Chestnut Street and Boston Turnpike. I would also note, Madam Chair, that the, at the last meeting, this board approved the use variance for this use on the site. And there was also an approval by the Board of Selectmen, a conditional approval on the condition of ZBA approval for this site. Furthermore, that this site, as Richard alluded to, would be subject to a site plan approval through the planning board, in which case it would be reviewed by the planning board for things like landscaping, interior landscaping, exterior landscaping, parking counts, obviously stormwater flows. It would go to the town's peer reviewer and so forth. And also, as Richard mentioned, it would have to go to con, conservation as well. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over back to you.
If, if I could just pop in here, at the easternmost portion of the Route nine frontage, there is another display pad there that is, was mistakenly, mistakenly not marked with red. So that is a display pad there. One of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, display pads. Okay. And those are, those are the pads that I was talking about, which are essentially laid out so as not to look like a line of cars along Route nine.
Thank you, Richard. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I do. But if someone else wants to go first?
Lisa, why don't you go first?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Ricker. I, I do have a number of questions. You mentioned the forty two feet and the, with the existing property on eight hundred, not seven eighty eight, there is a lot of grass and trees. Can you, do you have an idea of how much of a buffer is in the existing building compared to what you're proposing with the forty two feet?
Well, I think, I think to answer that question, I think that the existing buffer has kind of gotten out of hand in terms of any kind of business at that site. The pine, it's white pine trees out in front. And they've, they've grown large and unwieldy, unwieldy. And, and frankly, that frontage of the site was let to get overgrown because the building has basically not been utilized for quite some time. I think, I think six to eight years, frankly. Dave Mackwell, if you are on board here for discussion, you could talk about that. But I think that the plan is to remove most of those white pines and to put in the customer parking that we're talking about and only the display pads. But then the rest will be green space with shrubbery and with grass.
That's what I expected, but go ahead and explain.
This is David Mackwell, Kelly Engineering Group. I participated in the, the layout of this, this parcel. And we do have a Hawk Design Landscape Company to help us out with some final designs. I believe at the previous zoning board presentation, we presented a concept plan. And also to fill in a couple of gaps here, when we laid out the, both of the car parking and the display pods in the front yard setback, we, we did not anticipate needing a variance because they met the fifteen foot vehicular setback. If we were just parking cars there for any other use. But we tried to break them up. And when we work with Hawk Design, they usually do a really nice job of accenting any car displaced stalls with some landscaping and, and some mounted displays as well and integrated with the, with the shrubs and trees. So, but directly the question, there's no pavement in between the building and Route nine currently.
Okay, that answers that question. There might be follow ups to that. But I have a question for Mr. Cahill. Can you talk a little bit about the purpose of the buffer, particularly on the Route nine side? I'm struggling with that this use, these display pads and having vehicles on display in that buffer area. I'll be frank, I'm having, I'm struggling with the, that derogating from the intent of that buffer, the purpose of that buffer. So can you give a comment on, about that?
Right. So there's two things going on at the same time. There is a parking, a fifteen foot landscape buffer for parking. There is a parking, a 15-foot landscape buffer for parking spaces, that's active parking spaces. So what is being sought after tonight is a variance, not from parking, but from storage and display, which the zoning enforcement officer, Patty Sheehan, and our bylaws define differently than kind of what we call regular parking. So what's being asked for tonight is to store and display vehicles within that 50-foot. There is on the one side, there is an existing, I believe it's anywhere from seven to eight feet on the Chestnut Street side of an existing buffer with a stone wall.
It actually, it actually gets as narrow as 5.7 feet, I think, Bernie.
5.7 feet.
At one point.
Right. So, um, right, so under that variance, I would consider that, I would consider that side certainly to be covered by this variance for what they're looking for, for the sake of it. Because they're actually putting in, it won't actually be parking, it'll actually be storage on that side. So it kind of throws everything off. That, so the parking, the 15-foot buffer is for parking. And it's typically along public ways, which both of these streets are, of course. I don't object to it so much, and you've seen in my comment letters, that I don't object to it mostly for the main part, that it's already existing. With the exception of the 11, I believe, visitor spaces they're proposing towards Route 9. For the most part, the rest of the area towards Chestnut Street and the corner of Chestnut and Route 9 is already there. It's existing and it's been used as active parking for a very long time. The stone wall itself is in a bit of disrepair. And I think, working with the planning board through the site plan approval process, that we're going to be able to get a better landscape plan than what exists there today, which is a fair point, actually, made earlier, that it is something that's overgrown at this time and has been unkept for quite a while. So that's kind of my thoughts on the setbacks and the buffers, and I hope that's clear.
And if I could add to this, thank you, if I could, Madam Chair. You know, this question of what, what is parking is the problem. That it's kind of semantics, in my opinion, but you know, the question was whether parking of display vehicles is parking, or whether parking of inventory is parking. And the bylaws interpreted by our officer. And after discussions with town council, we felt that it was safer. That's why I said originally, we felt like this was the conservative approach to asking for this. Because lest there be any question whatsoever asked for the variance, because you clearly do have a hardship. You know, a third of your site is affected by this wetland in the rear. So, you know, parking semantics aside, that's why we're asking for this. The fact is that, again, these are in excess of 42 feet I would ask you not to forget that.
So I have one more comment before turning it over to someone else. I, I'm just going to show my hand, I guess. I, I have no problem with using the, I understand that distinction between parking and storage and display. So I have no problem with the red lines that you show in the existing spaces, everything along Chestnut Street. And the fact that even the curved, you can't see my mouse, of course, but the curved area going from Chestnut out to Boston Turnpike, I think that's going to give this dealership, you know, a lot of display area. I'm struggling with the pads, frankly. And I'll just say that, so hopefully there'll be other discussion and I'll feel more comfortable with it.
Peter, do you have any questions? You look like you have a few.
I do. So I'll, I'll do similar to what Lisa did in terms of showing hand. So I think it's pretty clear that there is a hardship based on that rather large wetland. So I think the sort of remaining question for me is the question about the derogation from the purpose of the bylaw. And I, you know, not having been there or anything when the bylaw was passed, I think the, the idea behind requiring these buffers is both aesthetics, that you don't want to have something right up close to the edge of the property line of the road, and also probably for safety. So I guess, this is sort of both a statement and kind of a question for Mr. Ricker. I think what would address that concern for me is to condition our decision on a commitment to maintain the existing stone wall on Chestnut Street and the vegetation, the plantings. I think you mentioned in your narrative that you plan to do that. But I wonder if there's, what the reaction of the property owner would be to having that for both parcels be a condition of approval.
I can, I can tell you this, and Matt is with us on the phone. And he can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but we discussed this with planning. We felt that it was a a good thing to do in terms of the buffer, to basically straighten out that wall and to clean up that frontage along Chestnut Street. And I do think that it's an improvement along Route 9, too. You're going to see a nice lawn and you're going to have very limited pads, which are 42-plus feet away from Route 9. So, so yes, you have that commitment by the applicant, Matt can correctly, I hope he's still with us. But the bottom line is, yes, I mean, we, we plan to maintain that stone wall and that buffer. As it's there, it's been used for many years like that, there's no reason not to do that. There is an opening, as you can see from, from Chestnut Street onto the property. That would be the only opening through the stone wall.
Right, but in terms of, as a, as a condition, sort of borrowing the language from your plan, maintaining and improving the existing buffer vegetation and the stone wall, and that vehicles would not be allowed to encroach further into the buffer with the use of concrete backstops or other curbing.
I, I think that's acceptable. Matt, are you, are you with us? Matt McGovern, are you with us?
I don't think he is, Richard.
Okay.
Matt McGovern logo here, he might be muted.
Oh, there he is. Matt, you're.
Star 6.
Yeah, so he's unmuted. Matt, can you, Matt McGovern, can you speak, speak up?
Well, I can tell you that, Mr. Mulcahy, we have no issue with that. I mean, I, I think the planning board would like that as well. I've talked, we've talked extensively with the town about this, and I think that the planning board would like to see that stone wall enhanced as well. I, I would tell you that when you say enhancing the vegetation along there, it would be tasteful, but it would be lower vegetation. It wouldn't necessarily be a lot of trees because we, obviously we're auto dealership and we want to make sure that there's some visibility.
Sure.
And I think, Peter, I, I think, Peter, you've put the wording just right. I was going to say not too specific and not too general, and I think you got the, the sweet spot there. So I will jot that down. When you make the motion, just make sure you mention that as a condition, please.
And I would note that I wish we had our landscape plan in front of you, that we had last, last time we were before you, and I apologize. I, I, I didn't anticipate that we wouldn't have that in front of us.
Okay. Do we have any, Matt, you have any questions?
No concerns, Madam Chair.
I have a follow-up. Me again. On, along those lines, making the motions and what is being asked for. I apologize, Mr. Cahill, but I'm not seeing comment letters in the Google Drive. So I just want to be sure I understand what we're, we're combining 800 and 788, I believe. And can we hear all of the variance or special permit requests?
So it's actually two separate variances. It's for the same thing. So the first one would be a vote with Peter's conditions, because that's where most of the stone wall is on that site. And then the, the vote for 788 Boston Turnpike would be the same, the exact same variance, it's the same thing. It's just a separate ownership on a separate lot. But when it comes before the planning board, it will be one site plan.
Can we move to hear them and decide them together, or is that procedure really not possible?
Um, at this point, you might as well just move forward with 800, and then Mary Beth can read into the record 788, and you can immediately move to make a motion to vote on it if you want.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I just can't let it go. On the plot plan, I just want to make sure they, if you could confirm the dashed line behind the pads, that is the end of the buffer? I'm just having a hard time.
The dashed line is the 50-foot front yard setback.
Okay, so even if you were on the lower side on the 788, I, I'm just trying to be creative and that's really crazy because you have a wonderful architect who's doing all of this. But I was, again, I think the, the existing parking spaces on the Chestnut side curving onto Boston Turnpike provides, you know, ample storage and display. But you also have two pads on that 788 lot where you have two vehicles, where you would have two vehicles, and even moving those in, you're still within that buffer line, so.
Actually.
I just wanted to confirm, yep.
Actually, we do not have pads on that 788.
Oh, I see the line. It's on 800, but it's, it, it looks like it's part of that grassy area.
And again, that's the intent, is we want the, we want to join these properties for the purposes of the dealership, so.
Yep, okay. Okay, thank you for confirming.
Any further discussion? And is there anyone in attendance that wishes to be heard on this?
If I could, if I could just finish by, by just suggesting, as you drive up Route 9, Ms. Gasset, you are correct. You do see some vehicles on the corner of Chestnut and Route 9. However, they are up above you. And you really, in order to visualize this, you have to recall, you, you come up over somewhat of a, of a hill. And it's at that stage, I mean, a lot of people miss this building, frankly. And, and when I told people about this project in the beginning, a lot of people said they couldn't visualize what building I was talking about. Because as you come up Route 9, you could miss this building if you don't do something to enhance it and, and to clean up that, that whole frontage and to make it an attractive site. So this is an effort to do that. And, and the pods, the pads, as, as I suggested them to you, they are an effort to do that as well, to at least show some display at, at a site which is otherwise somewhat difficult as you come up over the rise to see to the right, to see what's there, until you're basically beyond it in some cases. So thank you. Thank you for letting me finish that.
Thank you, Richard. Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't know if anybody in the audience, I think we need to be sure no one wanted to make comment.
Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Once, twice, three times? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve 800 Boston Turnpike. No, no conditions needed on this one.
Can I get a second?
Uh, Peter had a condition.
I think so, yeah.
I thought it was on 788, I'm sorry.
I thought it was 788 as well.
No, it's 800.
Yeah, really, so should I?
Yeah, why don't you make the motion, Peter?
Okay, so I move to approve with the condition that the property owner maintain and improve the existing buffer vegetation and the stone wall along Chestnut Street as shown on the plan and a vegetative buffer along Boston Turnpike. And that the proposed, or I guess the parking of inventory vehicles will not be allowed to encroach further into the buffer with the use of concrete backstops or other curbing. The end.
Kristin, do you have?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Okay, on to our next hearing, which is do I, do I have to do anything for 788?
Yes, you do. Yep.
I don't have. Um, I apologize, but I don't have it in my Google Drive.
You don't have the legal notice?
I do not. That's where I was struggling from the beginning. 788, it's not in there.
Does Kristin or Itis, do either of you have access to them?
I do not see it on the Google Drive from my end either.
There's the butter notice. Are we able to read it from there?
I've got another copy in there. If you refresh.
You'll have to refresh, Mary Beth.
Give me a second.
And there's the comment letter.
Okay, give me a second. I'm not seeing it, I'm sorry.
I have it here, if you want. I can read it if we need to, but.
You want to put it up and I can read it? Does that help?
Um, sure, let's do it that way.
Not showing on mine.
Yeah, one second, let me just control the window for a second by talking continuously, and then. All right, can you see that?
Yes. Okay, so to hear the appeal of MAG Real Estate Holding, Shrewsbury LLC, 770 Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for two variances to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section 7B, table 2, to allow display, inventory, and storage of vehicles in the 50-foot front yard and side yard upon property located at 788 Austin Turnpike in a limited industrial district as described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 35 29000. Okay, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a motion. I move to approve, conditioned on the owner's maintenance and improvement of the existing buffer vegetation and stone wall along Chestnut Street as shown on the plan, and a vegetative buffer along Boston Turnpike. And that the parking of inventory vehicles will not be allowed to encroach further into the buffer with the use of concrete backstops or other curbing.
Second.
Can I get a second? Lisa? All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you, Richard. Our next piece of, our next agenda item is to hear the appeal of Paul Macharia, 19 Midley Lane, Worcester, Mass. for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section 4B to expand an existing non-conforming structure upon property located at 22 Harvard Avenue in the Residence B1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 23, plot 30000. And is Mr. Macharia in attendance?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Welcome. Sorry to leave you hanging for so long. And thanks for the smiles I'm getting, I appreciate it. So, Mr. Macharia, could you describe to us what you have in mind?
Well, what I have in mind is to simply add a dorma on a single-family house, a Cape-style house. Right now, the house has, it's a three-bedroom house. It has one bedroom on the first floor, two bedrooms on the second floor, and it has one bathroom. And the bathroom, the full bathroom is downstairs. So I'm just looking to add a dorma, that way I can have a bathroom on the second, upstairs. That's it.
Do we have any commentary on this?
A comment letter on it?
Anything we need to be thinking about? This is a pretty Anything we need to be thinking about? This is a pre-existing non-conforming.
That is correct. It is non-conforming for the fact that the house predates the zoning bylaw of 1967, so therefore, the applicant is basically asking that the dormer be put on and it would be within the existing footprint of the house that is before you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have, um, anyone in it? Any comments? Uh, Lisa, do you have a comment? Question?
Of course, I do. Um, I, so the appeal before us, it's not going to do anything to increase the existing non-conformity, so I have no issue with that, but I do want to note that normally we require a plot plan from an engineer. What was, uh, given to us was the plot plan from a mortgage inspection plan, but I have no issue with that and I just want to make that clear because there is no change to the existing, uh, footprint and I think that that's, uh, too much of a hardship to ask the appellant to go through the effort and cost of getting that. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Nothing from me, Madam Chair.
Matt?
All good here.
Okay, great. Um, is there anybody out in Never Never Land who wishes to be heard on this? I'm gonna give everybody a second to unmute if they would care to be heard. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, wonderful. There's no further questions. We will take this under advisement and we will inform you of our decision and I thank you for your attendance. Any discussion? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve 22 Harvard Avenue, appeal as set forth.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, so moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Matt?
Aye.
I, I'm so sorry. Wonderful. So moved. There we go. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we've got 31A Gulf Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. to hear the appeal of Jason M. LaBeuf of 12 Durin Road, Worcester, Mass. for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under table seven, I'm sorry, section seven, table one, to allow an in-law apartment upon property located at 31A Gulf Street in the Rural A District and the Resident A District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plot Plate 16 Plot 016003. Is Mr. LaBeuf in attendance at the meeting today?
Hi, my name is Louis Mignona. I'm a project manager for J. M. LaBeuf Contracting. Jason is here with me, but I'm handling the project.
Wonderful. Tell us a little bit about what you're thinking about doing.
Uh, what we're proposing is to construct a second floor above a three-car garage within the existing footprint of the current home, an in-law apartment for the homeowner's mother. The entrance for the in-law will be coming through the, uh, from the existing house in the garage. And that's pretty much about it.
Do we, um, do we have plans?
You, you should have plans.
What plans are you looking for, Mary Beth?
Um, I'm sorry, I just found it.
Okay.
Sorry, this Google Drive is making me crazy tonight. Um, do we have any comments, Lisa?
So, uh, I have no issues with this. I think in-laws should just be allowed, but, uh, as the decision is worded, we, is it clear to the appellant that this must be used as an in-law by a blood relative? It cannot be used for any other purpose?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, any comments?
Uh, nope. Similarly, I would approve with the usual conditions.
Matt?
No comments, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Uh, is there anybody, did I ask this already? Does anybody in attendance wish to be heard? Did I already do that?
No.
Okay, anybody in attendance wish to be heard? I'm gonna let this go for three seconds. And if we don't hear from anyone, I'm going to move this right along. Okay, there are no further questions. We will take this under advisement and you'll be informed of our decision. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve 31A Gulf Street.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Uh, question, is that what the, the usual conditions for in-law?
Conditions for in-law, yes.
Blood relative, son sets with the owner. Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Matt? Uh, well, all in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Matt?
Aye.
Thank you. So moved. Wonderful. Moving right along here.
Quickly, I'd like to tell you this is a great way to do a meeting, uh, where you can sit back and relax muted and off the camera. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you to Governor Baker for allowing us to do this. It's been efficient and, um, aside from all the little fun Google Doc stuff that happens, uh, we're having a good time. So thank you for attending.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too. Thank you for the patience of everybody out there waiting to, to be heard as well. Okay, so next we have 312A South Quincy Ave. Um, this is to hear the appeal of Jessica Cipro, 312A South Quincy Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a variance and special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section seven, table two, section 4B to construct a garage 26.8 from the front yard setback and expand an existing non-conforming structure upon property located at 312A South Quincy Ave in the Resident B2 District. The subject premise is described on the Assessor's, Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 45 Plot 255000. And I understand that, um, Attorney Ricker submitted a request for continuance to the July meeting. Can I, is that?
That is correct. Yes.
Great. Could I get a motion to continue this to the July meeting, please?
Move to continue to the July meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Next up, we've got 78 Howe Ave. To hear the appeal of Norman and Christine Romano of 78 Howe Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section 5B to construct a deck on an existing non-conforming structure upon property located at 78 Howe Ave in the Residence B1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 40 Plot 125000. Do we have Christine Romano in attendance or?
You have Christine and Norman Romano, but, but you also have me, Madam Chair.
Wonderful.
Richard Ricker, um, again, attorney, I'm here to, um, represent the Romanos, who are both attorneys as well, but they asked me to, um, uh, just discuss this with you if I could.
We won't hold that against them.
That, that's right. That's right. Thank you, Attorney Mokke. The, uh, this is, as you suggested, a special permit and, um, it is to, uh, add on to their house a deck that is actually a little less encroaching on the sideline than the house itself, which is a prior, uh, pre-existing non-conforming structure. I think that, uh, it is in their backyard. You can see from the, um, plan that was filed with this that it's, it's a, quite a large backyard. Uh, this is a fairly large lot. Um, I would suggest to you respectfully, uh, I, I know the Romanos have talked to their neighbors. They haven't, uh, been informed of any issues that anybody might have. I would respectfully suggest there's no nuisance to this. This, uh, this is a, um, and, uh, an increase of an existing deck and, and it, uh, basically would allow them to utilize their deck for their backyard in a better fashion. So I would suggest respectfully, there's no nuisance value to this, no, um, noise factor, uh, unsightliness, traffic generated or anything of that nature and it's pretty, it's about as straightforward as you get for a stra, a special permit.
Thank you.
And the Romanos are with us if you, if you have any particular questions for them as well.
Well, welcome to the Romanos. Do we have any questions from the board, Lisa?
Uh, I just want to confirm that all you're doing is extending your deck to basically the edge of the house to have the same setback as the, uh, existing house structure, correct?
And going out, and going out a little further.
It's actually becoming more conforming as it turns out, Lisa, because currently it is 7.2 feet away from the house and the deck, once it is extended, will be 7.5 feet away. It is very slight extension, but it is an extension.
Okay, thank you.
But it is also, uh, going out further from the house itself, so.
A little bit, yeah.
A little, a little bit wider, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have any comments, questions?
No comments, Madam Chair.
All right, Matt?
No comments.
Okay, does anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this matter? Going once, going twice and three times. Let's move to vote. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve without conditions?
Second.
Uh, Lisa, all in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter Mokke?
Aye.
Matt Armenti?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving right along. Next up. Okay, next up we have, um, the subject property, Boston Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. To hear the appeal of Victor De Oliveira, 280 South Quincy Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section six, table one, to sell vehicles upon property located at 306 Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business District. A waiver is required for the site plan requirement. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32 Plot 547000. And I understand a waiver has been submitted to not provide an engineered plot plan. Is that the case?
That is correct.
Okay, Bernie, can you give us a little information on this?
Um, is Anna here presenting?
Yes, I am.
Oh, Anna. Sorry about that.
Could you introduce, could you introduce yourself and then give a brief overview?
Yeah, good night, everyone. Uh, my name is Anna. I'm partnered with Victor and I've been working with, um, Bernie throughout, you know, all the requests. So, um, thanks for listening to me.
Great. Could you just describe a little of what you're asking for?
Yeah, we're simply trying to use our existing, um, parking space to sell maximum of three cars in order to, you know, increase our income source.
Okey-dokey. Lisa, do we have any questions?
Uh, just a summary, I think. Looking at all the paperwork, so it looks like uh, there are existing parking spaces to the rear of this property and you'd like to use three of those spaces, um, that are, right now, I guess, used for overnight parking, but you'd, uh, like to use them for inventory and repair. Is that correct?
No, we're trying to use the three spaces to, um, sell, um, cars, used cars.
And what is the purpose of those three spaces right now?
They're being, uh, used as overnight parking spaces.
Okay, so that is correct. Okay.
So Lisa, the proposal.
Let me just go back to the application. Yep, go ahead.
Lisa, if I could just clarify, so they're proposing to use three of the overnight parking spaces outside in the rear of the building for, uh, for sale automobiles. Um, they haven't been up to this point using the interior of the building for overnight parking spaces, so they're gonna, they're proposing to use those two interior spacing for, to make up for the loss of not the total loss of the three overnight parking, so.
Understood.
The, the vehicles are in there anyways. They'll just leave them in there, so the, uh, they'll lose one net, um, total parking space for overnight, but otherwise, that's it really.
And we, yeah, and we can condition it to, limit it to just three spaces and they must be in the rear?
So the Board of Ap, uh, Board of Appeals, Board of Selectmen, already conditionally approved, um, their class two license for automobile sales with the, well, two conditions, that's for sale is three. So I, I would suggest to this board that somebody, that a motion be made at the end to add a condition that mirrors the same thing Board of Selectmen's saying. I think it's important that both boards are on the same page, but I think something that this board can do, which the other board did not do, which is also add a condition that these, um, for sale vehicles will be in the rear of the building only and not in either of the two parking spaces along Route 9. That's to address some of my concerns, um, Ms. Sheen's concerns, um, about parking along Route 9. So that's all I had to add to that.
Thank you. Peter, do we have any discussion, comment, questions?
No, I'd be offset with those conditions, I think.
Matt Armenti?
No comments from me.
Okay, wonderful. So, um, is there anyone in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter? So, unmute yourself and let us know you're there. Okay, so if there's no further questions, we will take this under advisement and you will be informed of our decision. Can I get a motion, please?
To approve, um, with a maximum, on the condition that there's a maximum of three spaces used for sale of cars and that those spaces be limited to spaces located in the rear of the building or rear of the property.
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
So moved with conditions. Thank you. Next up. We have, um, to hear the appeal of 786 Hartford Turnpike LLC, 786 Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section six, table one, to create a caretaker's apartment within the commercial structure upon property located at 786 Hartford Turnpike in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 43 Plot 001001. Do we have, um, I'm not sure if there's somebody here in attendance that would.
There is, Madam Chairman, uh, and members of the board. Good evening. For the record, are you able to hear me okay?
We are. Was it Todd Rodman?
It's Todd. My name is Todd Rodman. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Cedar and Chandler in Worcester and I'm here tonight with Eric and Maria Richmond. I'm actually at the property. I don't know if you can see the Richmans.
Yes, we can.
And, uh, as you, as you read from, uh, the notice, the Richmans own this real estate, the two of them, and they also own the business that's operated from these premises, which is Ransford Pest Control. They bought, they bought this property in 2018 and moved their business here from Worcester. And they would now like to create a second-floor caretaker's dwelling unit. They're here, literally here seven days a week during their busiest time and creating a caretaker's dwelling unit would allow them to live here, be closer to the business, to keep an eye on the property. Your zoning table at section six, table one, allows a dwelling unit for a watchman or a caretaker by the issuance of special permit from your board. We've reviewed the construction plans over the past six months with the Building Commissioner, Ms. Sheen, and the, our, our architect, Dan Benoit. We had a number of meetings with Ms. Sheen and I believe we've addressed all of her code-related concerns. As noted in the letter to your board from the Assistant Town Planner, the appropriate standard to be applied to the special permit is whether the caretaker's dwelling unit creates a nuisance by virtue of noise or odor or lighting or, um, smoke vibration or traffic. And I'd suggest to you that this is really a perfect location for a dwelling unit for the Richmans. It's inside their existing building, so literally, nobody would even know that they're here. They're running their business as it is. Um, it's, the building is already up. No exterior changes are proposed. There's existing utilities, existing access, existing parking, so there's really no exterior changes. This would simply allow them. This would simply allow them to create a dwelling unit for them to live in here. And, um, we're happy to try and answer any questions, but it's really as, as simple as that.
Do we have any questions, Lisa?
Uh, no, I have no issues with this. It's allowable by special permit. Uh, I do, I guess I have a, I do have one question for Mr. Cahill. If a condition can be placed on this that the caretaker apartment can only be used by an employee?
Um, you could condition it that, employee or owner, I suppose.
Okay, oh, yes, yes, correct, because it would be the employers.
Yeah, this is, um, this is something I just and I've talked about a li- a little bit, just, um, this is the first time in any of my planning activities for the last many years I've ever come across caretaker apartment. Um, it's, it's a bit of a, um, I don't want to say old fashioned isn't quite right, the word, but it, it's something that tended to happen a lot more often in days gone by. But it's still on our books and it is still allowed, so it's kind of at the discretion of this board. I, I would be comfortable with that condition as employee or owner in this case.
Yes.
I think I'd be comfortable with that, and it tends, it doesn't run, uh, were this to be sold, the next person would have to come back for another special permit as well.
So it's sunsetted, yeah. It's, so it's similar to me, to an in-law and, and the purpose of that condition and sunsetting is the same.
Correct.
So, I would, uh, I think we should have that condition if the appellant is.
That would be acceptable, that would be acceptable to the Richmans. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Um, is there anybody in attendance who wishes to be heard on this matter? One, two, three. Thank you. If there's no further questions, we will take this under advisement and we will inform you of our decision. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve with conditions, 786 Hartford Turnpike.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
And just to clarify, the can, the conditions being that it would sunset with ownership and that it occupancy be limited to the owners or employees, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, second.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, all in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt Armenti?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Thank you very much for your patience, again.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we've got subject property, 6572 Main Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. This is to hear the appeal of Aurelia Holdings LL, Weinstein Holdings LLC. 385 Mystic Street, Arlington, Mass. For use variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under Section 7, Table 1, to add six dwelling units to the second floor and request a parking variance under Section 8D upon property located at 566-572 Main Street in the Limited Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 22 Plot 169000. Do we have Mr. Weinstein in attendance?
Yep, present.
Hi, Dave.
Howdy.
Howdy. Um, is there, okay, would you like to just chat with us about what your intentions are?
Absolutely. So, uh, myself and my partner, Femiyan Mazzini, also on the call, recently purchased, uh, this downtown block. And on our investigation, the upstairs had prior been used as residential. However, it had lost its grandfather status. There was one unit that was still being occupied within the two-year window. But the grandfather status only applied to one, and they're really not in livable shape. So what we'd like to do is renovate all the units, do some light reconfiguration of, uh, you know, moving a couple of walls around and bring them back into service.
Thank you. Bernie, do you have any comments?
Um, yeah, I just, um, Dave, so they're actually, um, that's one of the variances, right? So the first variance is for the allowance of apartments on a second story. The other variance is for the parking. So if you actually just look at the Amici's building itself, what people maybe don't realize is that the property line runs directly perpendicular from the road, just to the right of that building. So in total, there's only, um, 18 spaces, uh, where if you were to go by our current zoning bylaw for square footage and run the calculations, it'd require 57. Now, this has been here for, as everyone knows in town, I believe, uh, for over a century now. So this is, when we say a pre-existing non-conforming, it's pre-existing non-conforming from the very beginning of zoning. That said, um, this is actually somewhat what we have been encouraging, the, uh, vertical mixed use, as it's called, with commercial and retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor. In fact, if any of you or any members of the public listening tonight are aware of the Town Center Zoning District that's coming to town meeting this year, this is exactly the type of development that we're looking for in the town center. So I think this is a great start to that. It's a traditional use that goes back decades, if not centuries. Um, and this one in particular has already existed here before. Mr. Weinstein, um, in discussions with me, I recommended that those nine spaces that are per the zoning requirements for parking for residential be reserved just for the parking spaces, for, I'm sorry, just for the residences. Um, and that way, someone shows up to their apartment, they're not going to be fighting for a space with someone picking up a pizza. There'll be nine reserved spots on that site, um, for the residences, which I think was key. I do suggest to the board in my comment letter that a condition be added to the decision that states pretty much that, um, a shared parking plan be provided to the Planning Department and the Building Department, uh, which is the zoning enforcement half of the town, prior to their certificate of occupancies being issued. And the reason for that is simply because, um, as, uh, either of the applicants can tell you, they've also purchased the bank, the lot to the right of that, which is, Dave's gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong, 564, uh, Main Street? I think that's right. Um, so they've purchased that as well. So that has operated as shared parking, um, for a long time. I think, though, all of us would agree that it hasn't been functioning great, which is another reason for that condition. I think we really need to kind of formalize that shared parking between those two buildings and what this, what it's for. Right now, the signs for the bank say, "Bank Parking Only." So if you show up there, it's very confusing. Can I park after hours? Can I not? So we've been working with Dave and Femiyan to come up with, um, a, a, a really great plan for this. So I just think, I don't think it's, you know, I think it's what they want to do and I think it's good for us. And I think it really sets a great precedent for what else can happen in the town, excuse me, town center area for, uh, shared parking agreements. So that's really the only thing I'd say. I'm generally in favor of what they've been supporting, uh, what they've been proposing. And I think with that condition, I think you would, uh, really wrap it up with a nice bow at the end. So that's just my two cents at the moment.
And I'd like to add one thing, you know, our intention would be for the residential spots to be tucked behind the building. So it's kind of a protected, dedicated space for them.
Thank you. Uh, do we have anybody out there in attendance who might like to be heard?
Yes. I would like to be heard. I'm a neighbor.
Sure. Can you identify yourself, please? Name and address?
Yes, my name is Jill Canelli and I live at 6 Grafton Street, which is the condo building behind Willie's Steakhouse, which is, um, the white building to the left of, of this property.
Yes. Hi, Jill.
So, hi. I had a couple of questions. When they're talking about adding six units, there are already four, I believe there were four, so does that mean there would be 10 in total? Or does that mean the four would be made usable again and two added? So there would be a total of six? That's the first question. Yes.
Why don't we break that down? Dave, would you like to address that, please?
Yep, it is, it's the latter. So when we do a walk-through upstairs, it looks like there are five residential units in kind of a, some kind of weird office space. Uh, I don't really know how to describe it. Our goal is really just to put those same units, um, back in service and take that, uh, you know, that funky office space to make it a, a residential unit. So there would not be, um, an addition to what's there. It's just taking what's there and repurposing it. I think there's one additional unit because of that office space being repurposed.
Okay, so there would be six in total, is what you're proposing.
That is correct.
Uh, and the other concern I had was just that, that, that brick building is sandwiched between the pizza place. And then, of course, there's the bank in the back, and then on the other side, the white building, I don't know what the address is. Decades ago, it was the town spa, and now, um, it's a building that has had counseling offices in it. And I've heard people say that they had difficulty getting parking in the back of the brick building, that the property that you're talking about now. So, I, I think it's a great idea to build up business in the center. I think a lot of the offices in that white building, wish I knew the address, um, haven't been occupied. So I'm imagining if there are, if there are, the six units, um, are occupied. And then the office in the building on the other side are, are occupied again. I imagine that the parking is going to be really tight, because I've heard that it's been tight even without those residential spaces occupied. So I just wanted to bring up that concern, because I have heard that parking's really difficult to begin with.
And I can add just one comment, that we don't own the, uh, the white building or the parking needs behind it. But we certainly would be sensitive to it, um, if the overflow into our lots was a reasonable thing for us to negotiate with that owner.
Okay, I, I thought some of the spots for the white building were behind the brick building. So you're saying no?
That, that is not a, you know, from the legal designation, no, that's, uh, that's not true.
Okay.
Great. Anything else, Jill?
No, those are different questions.
Great. Is there anyone else in attendance that wishes to be heard? Going once? Anyone else out there?
Madam Chair, can I just ask a procedural question?
You certainly can.
For the purpose of conditions, so, so I guess I'll say two things. One, I think this is terrific. I think that the conditions that Bernie suggested make sense. My question is, would we be adding as a condition that the nine spaces be set aside for the residents? Um, and two, we'll add a condition basically saying that there must be a, um, parking plan for both properties submitted to the Planning Board. Do I have that right?
Yes, it's the park, it's not so much, so the way it would be is, the condition would be, let me think. A shared parking, it would just have to be a shared parking plan. The fact that it's being, the fact that they own the next door makes it a little easier for them to provide that to us. But we're not actually asking for them to provide the parking plan for next door, rather the next door is providing them with the ability to do shared parking. If that makes sense. So we're just asking, I think the best way to state is, show us your shared parking plan, leave it like that. To show how it's going to work. And then I think your other one is, that's a question for Dave, uh, Mr. Weinstein to answer. I can't answer that if he's comfortable with the, uh, condition for the nine spaces to be reserved for apartment use.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I missed it.
Just whether or not, um, you're comfortable with the idea of a condition for setting aside the nine spaces for the apartment residence?
No, absolutely. I think that's needed.
Okay.
Great.
So I'm off, thank you.
Lisa, is there anything you've got going on?
Uh, no, I just want, I, too, as Peter stated, wanted to make sure that it was stated clearly that nine spaces would be reserved for residents only. And I really appreciate the butter, her comments, and I hope, uh, she feels that the shared parking plan and the improved signage will help alleviate some of the existing problems that are there today. So I'm, I am very excited about this and I would approve it.
Great. Bernie, can you just, um, state for the record, um, the impact that town meeting, had town meeting happened before this? Can you just walk us down that road a little bit? I just think that's an important point to make.
Um, sure. So if the Town Center zoning bylaws, if we'd had our May town meeting, which we were supposed to have, and this, and the Town Center zoning had passed as written, um, they would not be here before you at all. He, uh, they would do a site plan, uh, to the Planning Board simply for the, um, or maybe not even that, I have to double check, for, uh, less than eight apartments and a vertical mixed-use building. And the shared parking plan would be simply provided to planning and building to show us that it, that it works. We're trying to make this, these types of arrangements much more amenable to developers, um, but also to make the town more flexible with how it does with parking. And to get that kind of traditional New England Village feel, this is kind of, what we're going for is these types of, um, I call it the Amici's building, because it's a restaurant there, but, uh, these, that type of look and that type of feel. So I, I think, yeah, so basically, if that had passed, they wouldn't be here before you today if we had had a town meeting as planned. Instead, it will probably be in the next couple of months, and they'll be a couple of months too late, and they really wanted to get going on this, so they came, they did the right thing and they came before us and, uh, they're requesting these appeals now, so that's kind of the whole story.
Um, I, I would just like to comment and, and welcome the two of you to town and, um, I, I think that the shared parking is going to be, you are going to be, um, sort of the, um, you're going to help us navigate through that as an important, um, aspect of how our town center is going to take shape, so, um, we're excited to see how that works. And, um, I think we all agree that the Town Center is such an important part of, um, have happened, so, um, I, I really, um, I, there's somebody, um, at the top that, is there anybody out there that wishes to speak? Because I see someone's microphone lighting up.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Moira Miller.
Oh.
And I am, I'm calling, uh, I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Shrewsbury Town Center Association uh, in, to support the applicant's request for, um, the use variance. For people who may not know, the Town Center Association, um, mission is to improve, enhance, and foster economic and cultural development in the town center area of Shrewsbury. And shortly after purchasing the property, uh, both Dave and Femiyan, um, met, actually, they've met a couple of times with, uh, members of the Town Center Association to, you know, share their intentions and their philosophy and, and, um, their passion for creating vibrant downtowns. And so we were certainly very pleased to hear this as, uh, this dovetails, um, very nicely in with, um, again, the vision and the mission of the Town Center Association to create a vibrant, viable downtown for, um, our residents and our businesses. As you all know, this is an area that has been in need of improvement and enhancement for, um, for some time now. And, um, so we are, uh, looking forward to, to working with them, to doing what we can to help their plans. Um, and we, um, we encourage the, the board, um, to hopefully, um, find it fit to move forward, to approve the, the variance, so that they can move forward as soon as possible. And if I could, I'd also like to mention in this whole area of shared parking, it's something, as, as Bernie said, um, the town has been working on for quite some time. Um, and we had an example recent, um, in the past few months with the Yuletide Market, which occurred in the center of town. And we were able to coordinate, um, over, um, I believe it was over 500, maybe close to 700 parking spaces that are actually available in the Town Center District area. They're oftentimes located, um, behind or on the sides of buildings. But the businesses, um, were, um, were very open and willing to work with us to, um, to allow those spaces to be used for, um, for that purpose in the market. So, um, so we would, um, as SPCA, look to continue to work with, um, with Dave and Femiyan in, in, um, you know, if, if they wanted to, to, you know, help to kind of identify those areas and to build those relationships for shared parking. in, you know, if, if they wanted to, to, you know, help to kind of identify those areas and to build those relationships for shared parking.
Thank you very much, Moira, for those comments. I, I feel like there might be somebody else out there because I see another microphone lighting up. Is there anybody else out there that has anything to say? Okay. All right. Um, if there's no further questions, we will take this under advisement and you will be informed of our decision. And we thank you for your time. Can I get a motion, please, from the board?
Peter, can you make the motion with the two conditions?
Sure. So move to approve with two conditions. First, that nine spaces be set aside for the residents of the proposed apartments. And second, that a shared parking plan with the adjacent parcel be submitted to building and planning.
Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Second, a nice second.
Great. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Don't move. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a final hearing, last of the evening. And we again, thank you for everyone's patience on this. It's been a long um, the subject property is 11 Morningside Drive in Shrewsbury. This is to hear the appeal of John and Catherine Heald of 11 Morningside Drive, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaws under section seven, table two, to instruct an in-ground pool closer than 20 feet from the side yard setback upon property located at 11 Morningside Drive in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Pledge 06 Plot 002020. Kenny and Jim, Kim are in attendance. Would you like to let us know what you're thinking of doing, please?
Hi, good evening. It's actually John Heald, Jim's the other half. So that being said, we built the house seven years ago on the corner of Morningside and Knights Road. And per the town conditions or the way it's set up, we have two front yards, two side yards and no rear yard. The rear yard that we do have has an abutting stone wall that separates us from our neighbor. And it is required to have a 20-foot setback in order to put an in-ground pool in. We've had four separate pool companies out to look at the land and position the pool in the best place that we would have allowed. And what we're requesting is that it be a 12-foot setback versus the 20 that's required.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Is there anybody? Lisa, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have, I have a couple. I'm looking at the application and the, normally, we, uh, I should say, we do require a engineering plot plan, an updated survey and what I'm looking at and maybe there, I'm not seeing everything that's in the Google Drive. In your application, there's an old engineering survey and it looks like the pool's been drawn in. So do you have an updated survey? Did one take place?
Uh, we do not actually. We got this from the town and use this to have the plans put in place.
Okay, so we, I won't, I won't feel comfortable making a decision without a true engineering survey. I don't know about anyone else. And Mr. Cahill, you can allude to that. I've never approved a variance for a pool without one. And then I did have, okay, I also have a question. So why can't, uh, why can't the pool be moved within the setback? I didn't hear that described.
Well, the way the yard is set up, there isn't enough room from the back of the house to position it properly so that the, there's enough room from that back wall to the existing house. So as you, as this lot's set up, there's, there's really no backyard. It's
So I'm not seeing that. Maybe, Mr. Cahill, could you put the plot plan up and maybe we can describe it? Because I'm not sure what this square is that I'm looking at. Is it a deck or the actual house, the structure?
And to clarify a little bit too, for a variance, the statute requires that there be something about the shape, soil or topography of the land or the structures that is unique and that would impose a hardship, unique compared to other lots around. And, you know, I think Lisa's getting at this also. The lot appears to be flat. It appears to be irregular. So just sort of wondering what the, the hardship is that meets the criteria.
There is, the lot's not flat. If you were to come out, there's probably a 10-foot drop off at the backside of, if I'm looking at it here, from where the dashed mark is in the bottom right. So something about, oh, it's a 20-foot mark. So it does drop off probably 10 feet in slope. And then the block that Lisa's probably looking at is a pavement patio.
So the one side, it slopes off towards the edge of the property?
I see the
Off towards the street.
Yeah, it's a street. Okay.
So that would make, so it would need to be further from that, right?
Well, I guess it's 20 feet from Knights and 20 feet from the stone wall that separates our neighbor's house and ours.
Okay, so, no, that's perfectly all right. I'm, uh, so Peter mentioned, well, I mentioned one thing. We have to have an, a recent engineered survey. And Peter mentioned the second thing, we need sufficient evidence of a hardship. And I, I haven't seen, heard that presented even with the response. So is there anything else you could provide us?
I would also just like to make a note to the board and to the applicants that due to the fact that that is in fact a patio, and I was unaware if it was a patio or if it was a deck. And it is indeed a patio. A patio, according to the zoning bylaw structure, is not a structural foundation. So therefore it does not need to, it can basically be encroaching right onto the pool. So if the applicant was to say have the pool alongside the patio, that is fine, unlike a deck where it would need a 10-foot buffer. Unless it is a above-ground pool.
Is that clear to the appellant? Do you understand where, where we're coming from? The, the pool as drawn in the plot plan that we're looking at? The way we're looking at this, it, it could be moved closer to and abut the patio, the existing patio. Was that looked at, considered? And I would encourage you to consider that, I guess, is what I would like to say. And I know I for one will not feel comfortable voting on this without that updated survey. So I wouldn't be giving a motion to approve and therefore not approving it, just to let everyone know.
Sir?
As is.
Any, um, any other discussion amongst the board? Matt, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I'm in agreement with Lisa. I think probably the best thing would be for the appellant to perhaps continue until the next meeting when they can have the engineering survey done.
Yeah, I would add, it, it is tough for us to make a determination without the survey in front of us. And that's been the precedent that we've had for as many of these hearings as I've sat through. So
And to clarify, oh, sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead, Pete.
Um, and with a reduced board, it would be only one no vote for rejection. Is that right?
That is correct. So I would really encourage continuing.
Okay, put us down for continuance.
Okay. Great. So we're going to continue the hearing on 11 Morningside Drive.
I make a motion to continue the
That's right.
The hearing at 11 Morningside Drive.
Second.
Lisa?
Aye.
All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. Okay. I think
Madam Chair, can I interrupt?
Yes, sir.
Uh, could we go back to the very first one that we took out of order, 77 slash 79 Harrington, to see if the appellant's present at this time?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Nope, that's all right. I put a note down.
Do, uh, anyone in attendance?
It was Mr. Montanari.
Mr. Montanari for the shed at 7779 Harrington Ave. Going once? Going twice? Sorry, Mr. Montanari is not here tonight.
Um, so the board's going to have to make a decision whether to continue it or to close it.
Okay, so, um, I know our esteemed colleagues who didn't make it this evening, aren't present this evening, would not vote to continue this because it, it costs time and money to do these things and the appellant didn't show up or notify us.
Lisa, I would, yeah, go ahead. I was just going to say, given that it's a remote meeting and the circumstances that we're in, and also that it's not really a big deal and that it's just a, it's a shed seeking a variance, I am comfortable recommending continuance. If it was a different, I think if it was different circumstances, I would probably be more inclined to go the way of some of the more veteran members of the board. But I think in this case, I think I'd be comfortable seeing that happen.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so, uh, continue, but if they don't show up next time, maybe we wouldn't continue. So
I think, I think that's reasonable.
I think that's reasonable as well because I've been trying to also get in contact with them along with Patty. And we sort of got a reply from them over the last seven to 10 days, but nothing was like definitive as to what was going to be presented for tonight's meeting. So therefore, I don't know if they were on vacation or what have you, but I definitely do say that a continuance is fine for this one. And then if not next time, then we'll go from there.
Okay, uh, I make a motion to continue 77 to 79 Harrington Avenue.
Seconded.
Second. Hey, Lisa?
Aye. Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
And do we have a Matthew Armenti? Aye.
Aye.
And aye for Mary Beth Lynch. Um, that, I don't even know how to officially close this meeting out, to be quite honest with you. That officially concludes the talking board meeting for the Town of Shrewsbury for June 29th.
Mary, Mary Beth, excuse me.
There might be other business.
Business.
New business.
Yeah. Apparently.
To approve new Board of Appeals' application deadline dates for 2020. This is a staff request. We've been finding that we could possibly use a couple more days on the calendar to process applications. So starting not this week, because it would be tomorrow. So starting in August, the application deadline would be moved forward two days. So it'd be earlier than it is currently, which this week, the application deadline's Thursday. So we're not changing this month because that would be tomorrow, which we didn't want to do that to anyone. So starting next month and for the remainder of the year, everything would be two days earlier. So instead of due on Thursday at noon, it would be Tuesday at noon of the same week. And Kristen put the calendar up. Correct, Kristen? Am I wrong? I think you put it up on there or Google Drive and yeah, so you can view it.
Um, how is this?
So the reasoning for it really comes down to the fact that when we're receiving some of the applications that are coming in, the short term of trying to figure out what is happening between then and the legal notices going out is such a short term. It literally comes down to, we get it on Thursday, we have Friday to review it, and then Monday, that's more or less it. And then we have to submit them for legal notices come Tuesday. And it's just not enough time if we need to correspond with the applicants on any related issues. Or if we have a question, oh, no, there, are you filing for a variance or is it a special permit? We can give them some follow-up with it. And that way we know exactly what to file for the legal notices come Tuesday. But currently as it stands, we're only given basically two and a half workdays to work on this versus what we're proposing, which would be a full week.
Well, that seems a very reasonable request to me. Can I get a motion? Can somebody repeat what he just asked for?
I have a question before we make the motion. How is this going to be communicated to the public? Are we going to put it on the town Facebook page or something other, other than just the town website? Because I think there's people who do, make a lot of appeals to zoning, just know they have, you know, so many days before the legal notice or the meeting. How will they know?
I think
We can, oh, go ahead, Idis.
I was going to say that I think with the approval of tonight's meeting, if it was to get approved, would be to basically get that printed off tomorrow, sort of like how we handle all the application reviews after, for the acceptance of all the decisions for, from ZBA the day after and through the rest of this week. We will go and also include into that the updated calendar schedule. And then on top of that, be able to post a brand new schedule on Facebook or what, what other social media sources there are, saying that this is a new amendment to the calendar dates. Do not refer to the old one. This is the new one, something along those lines.
Okay. I would think there would be some sort of seasoning time where you're going to get, you know,
Yeah.
You're, you're going to have to be dealing with Monday morning quarterbacking, but I'm sure you can handle that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably a good thing. Could I get a motion, please, from a board member?
Yes, I, I make a motion to approve the adjusted meeting and deadline dates for ZBA appeals.
Second?
Seconded.
Great. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye.
Madam Chair, one very, very brief thing. I promise, very brief.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure if this is something that requires a motion or not. In light of the events this summer, I understand that the Select Board has asked town boards to consider, to consider how their work impacts the cause of racial equality in our town. And so I would just like to say that I, I know that over the course of American history, not necessarily in Shrewsbury, but just generally, that exclusionary zoning is something that has affected racial equality in the United States. And that I, I, and I can only speak for myself, but I, I hope the board as well would welcome feedback from the community as to how our work affects racial equality and what we might do to better serve the interests of all the people of our town. So I, again, I don't know if that requires a motion or if that's just sort of a comment for the minutes, but I just wanted to express that.
I think that's a great comment. And the Town of Shrewsbury residents and businesses have, are encouraged to send letters to the ZBA to let us know your thoughts. That's how I would I don't think a motion's necessary.
I think that's a statement and we appreciate it. So, okay, with that, I think we are ready to adjourn this meeting. Um, is there anything procedurally I'm missing, Bernie? Or Idis?
Uh, you need a, you need a
Yeah, motion.
Motion to adjourn, yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I get a second.
Seconded.
And I have to have an all in favor. Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt Armenti?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. And I want to thank Bernie, Idis and Kristen for your support throughout this very long meeting. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary Beth, for taking over.
Excellent work. You did a great job as the chairperson.
Very efficient.
Happy Fourth of July to everybody as we, yeah. Hopefully, everybody has a good evening. Thanks for everybody.
I'll miss the fireworks. Bye.
Good night.
Good night.